Yeah, yeah, great. So we are recording now. And this is a study session of the closure of visual tools group. We are a study group. It means we will learn together something. It is not a talk. It is not a lecture. Nobody here is expected to be an expert, even though there are a few very wise people in the group here. And we will mostly read into the Gigi plot book today. They spoke about Gigi plot and our package for the visualization with the grammar of graphics. And we are curious about Gigi plot as closure developers, as data people. And we will just start learning today. Maybe it is a beginning of a series, maybe not. And we will begin by introducing ourselves. So anybody here? Will say something if they wish about themselves and about how they relate to the topic. There are many visual people, many wise people in this theme today. And yeah, so maybe Kiro, would you like to begin and say something about yourself about data visualization and so on?
Yep, I can go first. My name is Sarah. I'm interested in programming. I've done work in software engineering, in civil engineering and in data. So in civil engineering, I've worked with data visualization, but not kind of doing the programming side, just using end user tools where you kind of zoom around and look at things. And I'm here because I'd like to learn more about data visualization and to be able to think about how to present the things that that I have to view, not only kind of view the data the ways other people have decided.
Thank you so much. And maybe later you say more, because I know you have more to say. And yeah, maybe Tomas, would you like to say something?
Yeah, hi, my name is Thomas and I'm a front end developer and I did do some data visualizations, mostly with D three and a little bit of free days. So R is quite new to me, except for some R doing my studies, which has been a while. And yeah, I'm really interested to see how the grammar of graphics works to to both data visualizations.
Thank you so much. Yeah. And by the way, this gallery of D three plots enclosure by Tomas has been guiding me recently. It is such a wonderful guide and thank you for this. And the other visual things you've been creating. And yeah, I'm Daniel. I am a community organizer at the Cyclops Community. Nowadays, it is funded by closures together for a short while. And yeah, I do meetings like that and some open source in the Cyclops Community. Andrew, hello.
Hey, I'm Andrew. I've worked as a data scientist and data engineer variously throughout my career, done professional data work in in Python, Scala, R and closure. So you know, it's been a few years since since I've done professional work with R. But my last job before my current job was at a shop that did data work primarily using R. And that was my first experience using Gigi plot. And you know, I'm interested in this discussion because you know, I found Gigi plot two to be superior for kind of, you know, fundamental reasons to every other like data visualization library that I've like ever worked with, you know, and you know, I work primarily enclosure now because that's my language of choice. But I'm particularly interested in the discussion today because you know, I think that there that there is a lot to learn from from Gigi plot two, which I think implements the ideas in Wilkinson's Grammar of Graphics book like better than than Vega and Vega Lite do. And so, you know, I know that those are the tools of choice and they work for a lot of things. But you know, I think that there is, I think, you know, there, this is, yeah, Gigi plot. There's a reason why Gigi plot two is like, you know, the data visualization library for R and no one uses anything else. So I'm excited to, to, you know, explore more and see what we can learn from it.
Yeah, thank you. And maybe just a bit later, maybe you will add a bit more about what the grammar of graphics is. Would it be good? Yeah.
Yes, I found some quotes from the book that I can read.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hello, Kira.
That's awesome. I'm excited. Hi, yeah, I'm Kira. I think I've maybe met most of you. Yeah, I I have basically just big hopes and dreams for for closure and data science. I have been working on some like guides and tutorials and books and stuff like that, documenting closures data science ecosystem. And I think one of the biggest like holes is the visualization story. So right now it's possible to do data viz with some Vega light wrappers, Vega and Vega light wrappers in closure. And you can use, you could use E charts or you could use anything. Basically, you can embed anything, any sort of like or D three, like existing JavaScript visualization thing in a closure notebook. But I think it's a bit ambitious, but I think it would be really cool to implement the grammar of graphics in closure. And so, yeah, I started talking to Daniel about this book, this Gigi plot book, because really it's just, it's an idea. It's a, it's a grammar. And right now the only implementation is in R. But in theory, like, there's no reason why we couldn't implement it too. And it's like a long, it's a, you know, it's a, it's like a pipe dream. And I think, but I just think it'd be really cool. So anyway, I just, you know, got to start somewhere. So I figured reading this book would be a good place to start. And Daniel and I have been kind of been poking around a little bit. And so I'm excited to do it together. And yeah, who knows, whatever comes of it comes. But I think, I think it would be really cool to to get some sort of, sort of legit, like real kind of more robust data viz library going for closure. Because I think that's, that's kind of the last like big missing piece, in my opinion.
Thank you so much. Yeah. And by the way, anybody looking into this video should check out the videos by Kira, the workshops about Hanami, which is maybe one of the interesting ways to visualize stuff in closure nowadays. And maybe the best way to learn it is Kira's workshops, which are online on YouTube. And Tomas, would you like to say something? Hi.
Thank you. Tomas is right here. You may know me as a generic me. I'm the author of several libraries in closure around mathematics and statistics. And like past math and similar stuff. And in the past, I was the co-author of closures, which is a R building library. Probably we will use it today. Or not. Do it, yeah. And in the past, I made, I created a library called CLG plot. And I did it from the scratch and I made a lot of mistakes and errors in the architecture of this library. And I, I hope to be back to this project. And I hope to learn how to organize the data flow in such libraries. And I think, yeah, the meeting today will be very valuable for us to figure out how to do this properly.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we could hear you. Maybe it was a bit like you were far away, but we could hear you. And it was, it is great. And I hope to ask you more later this session. And, and yeah, and CLG plot hopefully is a topic of another study session. I think many of us haven't learned it fully. And even if you're saying that it is maybe not in its final stage, it's something worth learning, of course, and amazing. And yeah, hello, Jared. Jared, would you like to say something?
Hi, Daniel. It's good to see you. Maybe I'm turning on my video. I don't like seeing myself, so I'll keep it off most of the time. But I'm Jared. I'm here. I'm a PhD student at a small university in Midwest of the States. I've been around the world. I've taught most recently at a small university in Eswatini, Swaziland, the South Africa region. And I'm here studying and I'm very inspired by all of you. I've seen all the works you've done and very impressed. So I'm here to be with the best. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think most of you know Jared from the chat on another name. And it is so amazing for me to finally meet. Jared has been creating lots of stats and machine learning examples and exploring the libraries recently. And would you like to say something more about yourself, Jared? Because
No, thank you. I appreciate you. You make me feel good. I try to put my input in and hopefully it's useful for somebody somewhere.
Yeah. Great. Yeah. So I think I'll share the screen now. And no, actually, should we say what the grammar of graphic is? And maybe Andrew, would you like maybe to open this and say something about the idea?
Sure, yeah.
Oh, and by the way, hello, Timid. Hello, our friend Timid just joined. So thank you for joining the meet. Yeah, sorry for stopping you, Andrew.
Do we want to finish the intros before I dive in?
Oh, maybe if you wish to me, if you're hearing us, then it is just the perfect timing to say something if you wish about yourself. And otherwise, oh, maybe no. Yeah. So yeah, Andrew. And maybe, maybe it is a good time to begin the intro. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. So the, the, you know, in the closure world, we frequently work with, you know, Vega and Vega Lite specifications, which are implementations of the idea of a grammar of graphics. And the grammar of graphics comes from, comes from the book by Leland Wilkinson. I have the second edition right here called The Grammar of Graphics, which Wilkinson, I believe, he, I, I'm, I don't remember all the details of his background, but you know, he, he did some, did some early work like in, I think, like the, in like the eighties, the eighties and nineties on statistical computing and data visualization. When access to graphical user interfaces was still relatively new in the world of personal computing. I believe his, his company was acquired by SPSS, the statistical like software, software, software company. And he was, I think he was, he was chief scientist there. And then eventually worked at H two O AI before the, before the end of his, end of his career. I think he passed away several years ago. But this book is basically like, kind of like his magnum opus. It, you know, kind of summarizes what he learned, you know, and has a lot of lessons that I think need to be relearned over and over again by people working with like data visualization tools based on, based on my experience. But you know, the important thing for our discussion today, right, is that the, this is the book that is the, is the, is the common parent basically of Gigi, Gigi plot two in R, which is an implementation in R of the, of the concepts from this book. And also the tools that some of us on the closure ecosystem might be more familiar with, with, you know, Vega and Vega Lite. But you know, I think like, the reason why this book is important, I think, is right on page two. So it's, 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 it's like pretty, I think this is, this is, this is a quote that like leapt out at me when I was, you know, first, first reading the book. And you know, I've read almost the entire first half of it, which is about the syntax of how to compose charts from more fundamental elements. So he says here, quote, "We often call graphics charts from Greek," which is in Greek, so I can't read it, "or Latin, or Latin charta, a leaf of paper or papyrus." There are pie charts, bar charts, line charts, and so on. This book shuns chart typologies. For one thing, charts are usually instances of much more general objects. Once we understand that a pie is a divided bar in polar coordinates, we can construct other polar graphics that are less well known. We will also come to realize why a histogram is not a bar chart and why many other graphics that look similar nevertheless have different grammars. There is a practice, there's also a practical reason for shunning chart typology. If we endeavor, if we endeavor to develop a charting instead of a graphing program, we will accomplish two things. First, we will inevitably will offer fewer charts than people want. Second, our package will have no deep structure. Our computer program will be unnecessarily complex because we will fail to reuse objects or routines that function similarly in different charts. And so, and we will have no way to add new charts to our system without generate a complex new code. Elegant design requires us to think about a theory of graphics, not charts. And so like, the reason why that that passage is important is because like, he's trying to like decompose the basic charts that we're all familiar with, like the bar chart, line plot, you know, time series, whatever, into, you know, the more fundamental like things like axes, scales, you know. Hold on, I'm looking at the table of contents. So table of contents, basically. Right, so you know, scale, scales, geometry, coordinates, facets, guides, these, these types of things. These are the, these are in, in, according to the theory laid out in this book, these are the, the, the things that like all of the other kind of day to day charts that we see and interact with are basically like special cases of, they're just different ways of combining them. And he offers a formal algebra for how to combine these constituents, these constituent elements across different chart types in a coherent and consistent way. And like, I think that like, our, the R library Gigi plot like is, is something that like much more directly implements the algebra that's described in this book than something like Vega Lite. And I think like that, we can, we can maybe, we can maybe pause and compare how you would implement the same plots in like Gigi plot two once we've gotten a little bit more familiar with Gigi plot for those who are new to it. But I think like, if we, if we look at like some examples of like, you know, like the miles per gallon dataset or whatever else like, and compare what the Vega Lite specification looks like versus what the Gigi plot command to produce the same plot would be, I think it'll reveal like the, the difference between Gigi plot and like what we're, what we're, what we're used to and, and go to why, why I think like Gigi plot as a library connects to this book.
This is great. And it is great that you're mentioning those concepts. Because yes, these are the words that Gigi plot, the Gigi plot book actually says. And, and I, I was kind of intimidated by all of it. But in the last few days, I learned that the Gigi plot book and Gigi plot itself, they are very clear about the notions. Actually, yes, there are quite a few notions there, but the notions are simple and clear. And we just learn to compose them. It may take some time, maybe not everything clarifies today. But yes, it can clarify. And, and yeah, that is great. Thank you, Andrew. Any other comment about the grammar of graphics, about the ideas broadly before we dive into Gigi plot?
I just think this is really, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead. I think I was going to say the same thing.
Okay, I, I, I'm really excited. I have tried Gigi plot two for like forty minutes today and never before. And a bit of Vega Vega Lite previously. And I kind of have this gut feeling that you're right, but I don't know exactly what it is. I also noticed that what you're saying about an algebra that composes with operations really kind of, I guess, been thinking about how to do this well in closure because there are instances of, of problems where I see that kind of a closure solution is really, really nice. For instance, what ME has been able to do for computer algebra systems. Yeah. So I, I'm looking forward to see, see where we're, where we'll end up.
That's gonna be great.
Great, thank you. So I'll share the screen now. And before we start thinking about Gigi plot and all that, I think we'll just practice using it a little bit from closure, just so that we know it can be done. And maybe Tomas, in a moment, you will say more about it if you, if you think there is more to say. So I'll share the screen briefly. I think you see the browser and the editor with some code. Yeah, things are moving in a moment. It will clarify. Right. So, right. So we have the editor here and we can write closure code. It is a closure namespace. And in this session, we'll assume that some closure is known to us. And, and yeah, so let us first see that we can use Gigi plot from within closure. And then let us kind of discuss what we are seeing. So yeah, we, we have logic here and we can use it from closure. It is a way to run R code from closure. Closure communicates with an R session. So, right? You can do some arithmetic and get a result. Right? So you compute a piece of R code and a few ways to do it. So let us compute a piece of closure, sorry, a piece of R code from within closure. And this R code will be some data visualization code. And I think most of you did say you have looked into Gigi plot, so, so should be a little bit familiar. So yeah, so first to do that, we need to bring the Gigi plot library to the, the R runtime, right? So in R, you would say library and enclosure, we may say something like that, Gigi plot. So now, Gigi plot two is loaded to the R runtime we are connected to from within closure. And now we can do something like Gigi plot two, sorry, Gigi plot two, and pass the dataset to it. And the Gigi plot R package itself has a few, a few datasets in the package. So maybe, yeah, actually, maybe, maybe let us begin by one of them, which is the MPG dataset. Yeah. So yeah, what is this? Right. So it is a T-bell, as they call it, which is like a table or the data frame with a nice API of data about cars. It's part of the Gigi plot package and we use it for plotting. So you can pass the dataset or the table to the Gigi plot call. And then you need to specify the mapping, mapping of aesthetics, which maps data columns to visual aesthetics. So the aesthetics are maybe that the X axis is defined by the city Y column and the Y axis is defined by the HWY column. It may be the color is defined by the year. So here we create a Gigi plot object and we will add something to it. The geometry, geom point for a chart of points or a scatter plot. And I put the parentheses just for convenience. So what is this? I compute this and it fails. Oh, right. The function is called Gigi plot, not Gigi plot two. So oh, am I not in the right namespace? Oh, sorry. I should load this namespace and try again. Is it stuck? Not stuck? All right. So the problem is that we don't, right, that's the point. When you print a plot in R, it is directed to the graphic device. And now, since we are running R from within closure, we don't have the graphic device visible. So we need to turn this plot into something we can visualize from closure. So we have this plotting namespace and and we may turn the plot into an image, for example, that we can see in closure. And now I send it to the browser with one of our tools, the clay tool. And you see a plot we've created. In this case, it is like a bitmap image. You can also turn it into SVG. Then it will, oh, and then you should say, yeah, this is, please view this as HTML. So let us not bother about all these details. SVG would look sharp, more sharp, of course. But let us use a buffered image for simplicity, right? So you can see the plot. So what we did in this workflow is from within the closure namespace, we are, we communicated with an R session. And in this R session, we did load the Gigi plot library and did some Gigi plot computation that created a plot object. And we turned it into an image and viewed that image from a closure data visualization tool. So that's a basic workflow. And maybe in a moment, we'll see just a little more, just to have a taste of what we have here. Any, any comments about this? Any thoughts?
Daniel, you're using like quotes, our quotes, doesn't however you say closure or however you say that, doesn't it have some kind of lispy representation?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So, yes, so the closure, the, the closure library for running R code from closure or for communicating, communicating with R, logic can do that as well. It can have some, it can work with expressions. Thank you. So let us do that. And, and there is a nice tutorial about it. And I, I think we'll not see all the diversity of what you can do. We'll have a little taste of it. So yes, you can create closure expressions that will be converted to R code. And you can also include closure data in your closure expressions that will be converted to R code. So let us see that. So this dataset, the MPG dataset, we also have it in closure. It is in the Metamorph library. So we have this toy data Gigi plot namespace with a few of the Gigi plot packages. And one of them with a few of the Gigi plot datasets. And one of them is this MPG dataset. So you see, there it is again, is a closure dataset this time. So now what you see printed is a closure dataset, right, of the same data. And yes, we can pass it to closure functions which are wrapping our functions. Let us do that. To do that, we need to require Gigi plot as a closure namespace. So you can do it like, like that, for example, with an alias GG, if you wish. So now we have GG, Gigi plot. This is a closure function, which is wrapping the R function. This is one way to do it. You can also work with symbols, but I think it would be nice to see this way where you actually work with functions. Right? So we are creating a Gigi block block and we are passing the argument of aesthetics. And this argument you create by calling the AES function, which is another function in this namespace. And you have a way to pass the other details in an equivalent way to what we did in the R code. And then we need to add, you see this plus symbol. So we need to add another R object. So we have this convenience function R plus, which is for adding values on the R side of adding R objects. And the things, the thing we are adding is GD slash geom point without any arguments at the moment. So this is creating an R object. And again, this R object can be turned into, oh, sorry, we need to run to evaluate it through R. Now it creates an R object, which is the plot. And now we can turn this object into an image. And we see the same, right? So it is another flavor of doing it. And there are some ways in between these two ways we saw here. One of them was just R code as a string and the other was actually calling closure functions and closure data, where the R runtime is communicating with it behind the scenes. And there are other flavors, like in the other variations of it. And maybe Tomas has some comments about it, about other ways to do it and about the idea behind. About the idea behind this mode of interim. And, or maybe any.
Maybe, maybe not, maybe not now.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah. And we have worked on it to talk about it in the future. Yeah. So, so. Great. So that was a little taste of calling G G plot from within closure. Let us do just another thing. And I think we just do it briefly. I, uh, Kira and I, we created a function. For representing. A G G plot plot as a closure data structure. And so Closer, the general interop library, it does have ways of converting. Our objects to closure data, but. Sometimes some of those object oriented layers. Of our objects are not con- converted to closure data out of the box. So some. Ad hoc tricks are needed to make sure you can actually represent it as a closure data structure. Which is something we like to do in closure, right? So we did write a function to, to make sure you can take a G G plot. Object and turn it into a closure data structure. Let us just see how it looks. Uh, yeah, so. Oh, right. Oh, yeah. Uh, should I send it to the browser? Maybe to see. Uh, oh, not the image, of course, right? Yeah, and maybe I'll just diswatch the data set itself. Sorry. Just remove some part which is a bit boring at the moment. So you see, you have this nested map. Which is not too big in, in this case, but could be more complicated in other cases. And this is repr- representing. The, the R object. Which is the plot before, before you actually render it, before you take care, before, sorry. R takes care of actually drawing the object. It has a certain data representation and. There is a nice R package called G G trace. That does similar things in R. For certain intermediate steps in the G G plot rendering process. So you can see actually how G G plot converts. This structure to other intermediate. Steps till it becomes the plot. And I think we can learn from these data structures and actually introspect what we are doing. And maybe later today we'll enjoy this as a tool, maybe not today. Um, but let us just know that we can do it. And also let's, let us know that the book, the G G plot. Book that will now open. Has a chapter called internals of G G plot. Which is a very brief but detailed description of the data transformation process that. Basically takes a data structure of this kind. And with actually with the data set itself that we removed now, right? And actually converts it step by step. Into the actual plot to be drawn. And you can see in this very brief but detailed chapter of the internals, you can see all the concepts in action. The scales and the, the guides and all of them, they appear here. And, and it just tells us where things are handled. And I think we will, we hopefully, maybe not today, but one day should spend some time with this chapter nineteen. So, yeah, so now we just know what we can do. And we have a little taste of this plotting idea and, and maybe just briefly. Uh, it is not today's topic, but let us say kind of how G G plot is different. From other ways we like to use for plotting enclosure. So some of you did mention Vega light and anime and, and there is some relationship between these different ways of. Grammar of graphic data visualization and the difference is something we care about. And that is why we're here today, I think. And so does anybody wish to say anything about difference? It is maybe not a long discussion, but just to kind of put things in context. About, you know, in your, in your view, in your experience, how this is maybe a bit different from Vega light, which we often use. I don't know.
Yeah. Could you pull up those internals again real quick? I think, I think, cause I think this is, I think this is actually very instructive, right? Um.
Yeah, and I'm putting the link in the.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't mean the, um, the chapter. I meant the actual, the, the, the plot specification that you displayed on your screen, uh, just a few minutes ago.
Right, yeah. So this is the, you, you see it now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think like, we don't have a one-to-one comparison because we don't have like the exact equivalent of the Vega light version of this plot here. But like, in my experience, like, you don't get the, um, the, the operators, right? That you use in G G plot, like the plus, you know, operator that is used to combine aspects. Um, right? Like when you're working with Vega light, um, and even its closure wrappers. Um, which are designed to like facilitate higher level interactions, right? Like you're usually basically just constructing what's, you know, on the left side of the screen here directly. To, to create like a Vega light bot, right? Like Vega light doesn't give you the, um. The compositional things that G G plot two does. And so basically you, rather than like using the combining operators that are part of like G G plots API. You just end up constructing the specification directly, even though, you know, under the hood. G G plot two is producing this, the, the, the same, a specification that looks fairly familiar. To someone who's worked with Vega light a, a fair bit, like, you know, I'm not, I'm obviously no expert in the internals of G G plot two. And it's been several years since I worked, worked with it on a consistent basis, but you know, just like looking at like. The, the way that this, that, that the plot is specified through this, like it, it, it looks quite familiar to me, having, having worked with Vega light. But nevertheless, like I find the way that G G plot two allows you to construct this specification. More intuitive than just building it directly, which is what I frequently find I have to do. Um, when I'm working with Vega light on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, I think that's the magic of G G plot is like the. The interface. Cause yeah, like I, I find the same thing like when I'm working with Vega, Vega light. I'm often just pretty quickly end up needing to drop in and like write JSON or Eden or whatever. It's like you're manually, you really have to understand the internals and the fundamentals of how it works to be able to write the specs that you want. If you want to do anything beyond like a really simple bar chart or scatter plot or something like that. And so. I feel, I feel like it kind of defeats the purpose. It's like, it's a really, it's a cool library and it's great, but it's like, if you have to understand it inside and out. Like what if you're not a software engineer or whatever, you know, what if you're just like, not just a data person, but if you don't, if you don't want to go into that rabbit hole. I think that's the whole thing is like, um, it's just, it's not, it's not, it stuff is obviously an abstraction, like it's obviously much a higher level than. Um, D three, which I, which it uses under the hood, but it's, it's still not. Super abstract, like you, you're getting into the knitted gritty of like axes and layers and scales. And it's like, I don't want to care about like the nuances between scales and axes and marks and encodings. And it's like, I just want to tell you, I want a line or I want to point and. That's, that's what I find cool and that's what I want to, that's what I want to make happen for closures is have that like magic. Behind the scenes translation between a, like a, a very friendly. You know, here's my data and I want a line here and I want a bar there and I want to point there. And then convert that into this like Eden or JSON or whatever, but never have to actually like go manually fiddle with it to get what you want. Um, that's the dream.
Yeah. Well, I think that the, also the, 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 the nice thing about G G plot two from, you know, from. And I need to find like a more complex example that, that shows this is that like, if you do need to like. Enhance like some aspect of it, like say like you want to like customize the marks on the axes, but nothing else, right? Like you can, you can still use the same operators to like. Basically flesh out like the customization that you want to apply to that part of the plot while leaving the other details like kind of like. Unchanged. So it's, it's, you know, it allows for kind of, um, incremental, uh. Like incremental specification or like incremental specificity. Where you, you're fleshing out the parts of the plot that you care about while leaving the other stuff alone. Uh, without sacrificing any of the compositional power of like the algebra and the operators. You know, I think is like, is like, that's like one of the things that I think, you know, G G, G G plot two does better than like any other library that I've worked with is, um, you know. Allowing me control over the fine-grained details. When I need to, without like making me worry about it all the time.
It's a really good way of putting it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, maybe let us mention a few other. Differences between G G plot and, and. And Vega light and anime, the things we often use in closure. So one of them is that G G plot acts in the backend. Right? You are in our runtime. You have all your statistical computing and you just compose things over there. And then you plot. And when you draw a histogram in Vega light. You actually bin the values on the browser side, which is different, right? And binning for a histogram is one example, but you may have other statistical summaries which are more essential to be done. In the backend. So that is another difference. And another one is more about, you know, the ne- nature of the API. G G plot is about functions, creating objects. And enclosure, that's maybe not our favorite way to, to work. Sometimes we don't like. That things are hidden from us, right? Vega light makes everything declarative and visible. Hanami, which is a way to write Vega light more briefly. Also makes things very much visible, just as plain data. G G plot does hide. The details we needed to dig in, in order to take them out. And if you watch the talk of. Uh, June Cho, the person who did the G G trace R package, then. They say the same. They say, yeah, we want to look inside. And G G plot is hiding from us. When if we are thinking about a G G plot like solution enclosure, maybe. It will be more open, more visible, like more kind of structured around data structures in a clear way. So, right, we, we are not committed to everything it brings, right? And but, yeah, and of course we can enjoy functions and the safety they bring, right? Just, you know, when you call a function, you can check the arguments are okay. And, and so. Some of it might be useful, but maybe eventually we end up with something which is more similar to Hanami, at least in my hope. And I think, uh, unless there are any other comments about this, maybe all of this belongs to another day, uh, when we discuss, uh. More about our plans. And now, yeah, any other comments? Oh, Tiago.
Uh, I'm, I'm just wondering specifically about the, uh, uh, is it all just data or is it objects? Uh, the internal representation of both, uh, write it router objects and. Uh, M A values is a custom type. So it's a def type or something under that, but you can ask for a data representation. So, uh, is it possible to kind of get the benefits of, of both? Or do we kind of have to choose either to just have plain maps or to do something really object oriented?
Are you talking about our plans enclosure or about G G plot itself?
Yeah, I, I, I'm kind of trying to picture how a closure, uh, closure flavored G G plots, uh, would, would look.
Yeah. So maybe for today, all we can say is, yes, these are the questions we should ask. And let us keep them for maybe next week, but, but let us first maybe study G G plot, I believe, right? Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Hmm. Yeah, should be, oh, Thomas.
Yeah, I have maybe like a more general question about our G G plot because I, I started like using it just the first time a couple of days ago. And one thing that I found a bit confusing about the API is the, is the use of the term aesthetics. Because for me, the term is more like something decorative or something. And when I was mapping like the aesthetics of the X value to something. It just didn't make sense for me. And I'm wondering like, is it? Is it similar for other people? Is it a weird term? Or do I just have the wrong understanding of what an aesthetic actually is?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I guess I don't have much to say, just that I agree. Like I found it. It's used differently than you might typically for sure. Like, yeah, it's, it's some, it's. More akin to like, like what other, a lot of other viz libraries called like encoding or, or marks or stuff like that. Like it's, it's. Yeah, it's not strictly like. Like the aesthetic appearance of the thing. It's actually giving you details about how you encode like data as. Like marks or, or whatever. So that wasn't super intuitive to me either.
Yeah, the aesthetics thing is directly from chapter 10 of the grammar of graphics, like, like, um. Wilkinson, Wilkinson is, is, is I think intentionally using the term differently than the way it's, it's, it's conventionally used. Um, so I think I'll just quote from the beginning of the chapter here, um. "We have chosen the name aesthetics to describe an object in our graphical system because of its original connotations. And because the modern word perception is subjective rather than objective. Perception refers to the perceiver rather than the object. Aesthetics turn graphs into graphics so that they are perceivable. But they are not the perceptions themselves. A modern psychologist would likely call aesthetics in this sense stimuli, aspects or features. But those words are less precise for our purposes. Um, the preceding chapters. Have discussed the components of the system for producing graphs, but up to this point, we have nothing to show. Without aesthetics, graphs are invisible, silent, indeed imperceptible. Aesthetics are functions that govern how a graph is represented as a visible or otherwise perceivable graphic." Um, and I think it's worth noting, I think that, um, Wilkinson's background originally is in psychology. Uh, that was his PhD training was in, was in psychology and, uh, did quantitative research as a, as a psychologist, um, before like moving into. Statistical computing and data visualization. So that may be part of the reason why.
This is great. Yeah. And by the way, the name of the argument is mapping. So your mapping is an aesthetic object for some reason. That's the way it is in G G plot. Yeah. Hmm. Great. So maybe what we can do now, we have a little more than half an hour to the official time. Maybe what we can do now is look over the book. And maybe see what we have inside and maybe pick one chapter and, and kind of spend some time with it. And, and then at the end we can decide, should we have more sessions like this? Should, you know, or any other format that will help us keep going. And so, uh, should I share the book, share the screen with the book or maybe another person? Um, I can share, but if anybody wishes, then, yeah, I can share. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Right. So this is the, the, the. G G plot book by Wickham and Navarro and Pedersen. And I think we'll just briefly go through the chapters and. You see, there is an introduction which is, will not be surprising, I think, to anybody who have used G G plot a little bit. And, and, and some plot examples. And, and then, uh, things which are kind of similar to what we've seen. And, and then there are, the, there is the layer chapter, layers chapter. But yeah, maybe before that, let us spend some time with this. You see. What we're doing here is passing the same MPG data set of cars. And defining the aesthetics, just the X and Y. And saying geom point for a point plot, uh, scatter plot, right? And also saying plus geom smooth. And then we just get this smooth, uh. Line, smooth curve line for free. Without specifying anything, you see there are some defaults in action and. We could change the, we could override the defaults. And maybe that's the point that you can. And maybe that's the point that you can add high level stuff, which is computed in your statistical computing runtime in R. And, and this stuff has some decent defaults that seem to be working. And, and then you can kind of override them and change the behavior. And yeah, so, so, uh, yeah, if you browse through GG Plot galleries, you'll see what, you know, the, the kind of the diversity of things you can do there. And, and then we have the layers part with many concepts introduced. Maybe let us just briefly look into a few of them. So the geoms, geoms are those things we were adding, geometrical layers, right? And some of them are individual geoms, which means you have one element per row in your data. Like we had in a scatter plot, every row in your dataset will be a point in your scatter plot, in your geom point, right? So there are many things like a bar chart and a point chart and many things like that, which are all individual geoms. Right? With, with a relationship between visual elements and rows in your dataset. And there are collective geoms where you have a certain summary, like that smooth curve we saw, right? Where you have a certain summary. There is no clear relationship between visual elements and rows in your data because something has been summarized. And, and, yeah, and then another notion which is presented here is grouping. Where here, for example, you may say, yeah. First, here we, we still have individual geoms in this example, like point chart and a line chart. But you're saying, yeah, please group by subject, which is one of your columns in your dataset. And then things are, are created per group. So a line chart is created per group. So the dots are connected separately for each of the group, which are the subjects of this, this dataset of boys. And, and then uh, when you, uh, when you, you know, add a smoothing like a collective job with some summary, it does matter whether you're grouping or not. And, and there are certain combinations of this. And I'm just skipping this briefly. So you'll see box plot is another way of creating a collective geom, which is a certain summary representing the, the variation of data. And, and you have things like that. So I'm just browsing through it so that we see that is here and maybe we come back in a moment. And so, so far what we have seen are individual geoms, collective geoms, and grouping. Well, you can say things are kind of computed separately per group. And yeah, so, so I'm trying to kind of read very briefly so that we kind of see the whole book and then we, we come back if it makes sense. But please stop me if there is something that you feel we should kind of spend more time with. And, right, so again, the idea is that these things we are adding with a plus sign, with a plus operator, these things we are adding are called layers. And where, you know, earlier we saw the data representation of a plot. So you see, it had those layers, which were a list of things. In that case, it was just one thing in that list of layers. But you may have more if you are adding more with a plus sign. Right? So geoms are certain, are types of layers, right? But you may also add, uh, statistical computations and and, you know, they, they may compute all, all kinds of stuff over the, the, the data and kind of make available more computed, uh, values that you can act on. And, and uh, when you create a histogram, this is an example of this kind. And a box plot is another example of this kind where there is some statistical computation behind that happens before plotting. So geom box plot that we saw earlier actually has some statistical computation happening behind the scenes by default. And a histogram also has some statistical computation, you know, binning the values and counting the values and bins. So these things are happening here behind the scenes without us saying stat something, but essentially you have a statistic, a, a stat layer, uh, uh, in, in your data flow. And, and later we'd see that more explicitly. So there are those ideas of different statistical summaries like, uh, you know, density approximation and so on. And so I'm, I'm skipping and yeah, and there is a chapter about geographical maps that we'll skip and about visualizing networks that we'll skip. And, and more details about what you can do with a plot, with annotations and so on, and arranging a few plots in a rectangle, some, somehow laying them out together. So that is the layers part of the book that we may come back to. And then there is the scales part of the book. And scale is one of those notions from the grammar of graphics book that Andrew mentioned. And, and maybe, you know, I think it deserves the time. So, right? You may say, for example, scale, scale X log. So that you would use the log scale for your X axis, right? And this does not mean we transform all the, we simply transform the X values by log, which is not the same, right? Because the numbers we see at the bottom of the exit, the labels of the X's would remain in a log scale. Uh, I'm looking for the example of log scale. Sorry. Oh, here is a good example. So you see, we have one plot on the left and one plot on the right. No, no, not a good example. Sorry. Oh. Yeah, actually, maybe let us, let us make a log plot because it is an important point and it is actually kind of a point that hopefully makes it clear why we need an ocean like a scale. And then, yeah, let me, maybe let us look into an example and then continue, right? So we had this plot. So. Right? We had this plot. I think it is, we can have hope. Sorry, this one. So this is, it is an example of a plot where we could have log scale of maybe the Y axis, right? So we can do something like plus GG scale Y log. And then what happens is that the spacing between the labels on the, the Y axis has changed, but the labels remain. Forty is still forty, but forty and thirty are closer than thirty and twenty because we use log state, right? So we did not transform the values and forgot all about the original values. We still, we still speak the language of the previous values. We just spaced them differently. So that's the notion of a scale. And, and there is also the notion of a guide, which is kind of related. So it is like just to be mentioned at this moment so that we know that these notions are simple and clear, but they are not clear to us yet. We should learn them. So we have a whole chapter in the book about scales like this, uh, these few, uh, sections. And then there is the part about the grammar. And this part does clarify a few things because it says that, uh, it, it kind of shows, you know, the roles of the different notions in our function codes, right? So, so maybe this one is worth spending time with. And, and because it is kind of, kind of, uh, beginning to look like, like a spec of what GG Plot is about. So maybe, maybe this one we could pick today and spend some time with. And, and here also it is clarifying the notions of scales and guides and in a very clear way. And, and so this part does deserve our time, maybe, uh, maybe today, maybe next time. And and coordinate systems are yet another, yet another notion where you can flip the, the X and Y coordinates and so on. You can do these, these transformations which are not exactly like scales. There are another thing and, and there, there is a collection of these as well. So it has this part of the book. And facets are about, no, uh, using some of our variables to organize some sub, subplots, uh, separately. So that we can kind of have a grid of plots and, uh, and it is yet another notion and, and themes, uh, we may care about as well. We see some nice colors. And then we get to advanced topics. And of, of the advanced topics, there is this part about programming and, 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 uh, I think yeah, I did skip something important. Maybe I should come back in a moment, but um, I think of the advanced topics, the internals is the one we should really care about because it really tells the whole story. Really, you see, it says mostly conceptually it divides the plotting process into two steps. Build and G table. And it specifies what each of these steps does. So build creates a new data structure with some transformation of our data, which is kind of more prepared for a plot, but not all transformations happen in the build stage, some do happen in the G table stage. And then it is already all about graphics, about making it, making it a plot. And so if we implement something like GG Plot, I think we should spend really our time in this chapter nineteen. And maybe I'll just come back to the grammar and then maybe we pick apart and dive into it. And yeah, so thi- this is the part that does clarify a lot, right? So you remember geompoint, right? Geompoint was about, you know, creating the scatter plot, you know, and, and actually geompoint is a special case of a layer, as we said. And specifying a layer is about specifying these five things. Geompoint simply has, you know, default values for these five things that you can override, right? So the mapping is null by default, but you may specify a mapping for a geompoint. If you specify it, it will override the, uh, top level mapping you have specified while creating the plot, right? So you may specify a mapping. You may specify a dataset that will override the top level dataset of the plot. You may specify a geom, but by default it's just point. You may specify some statistic, but by default it does nothing. And you may specify a position that we haven't discussed. We should find it probably somewhere in the layers or scales chapter is another notion that yeah, you should care about. And in geompoint, it is the, the generator as well. So you see any layer, any layer is just about specifying these five things. And basically overriding the value that could have been specified in the top level. So conceptually you have a top level where you specify the details and you have layers where each layer may have its own default for these five things and may also override them on the user side by saying, yeah, I'm defining a geompoint with this mapping and that, that statistic and so on. So I think this part does clarify a lot and, and then starting to think like that, you may realize, yeah, maybe for some time, we may try to program GG Plot this way, the more detailed way, and kind of just make this more visible to us about, you know, this additional details. And then come back to those functions that simply have more defaults, right? So, so that was an attempt to kind of quickly read all over the book. And now we can pick apart and dive into it if you wish. We have fifteen minutes to the official time and some of you may wish to stay. Uh, any comments so far? Any thoughts about, you know, about the mode of this session? Should we keep going this way? Should we do anything differently? Should we have another time next week? Uh, and any thought like that? What would make us actually learn GG Plot?
Daniel, my question would be, uh, to what end are we learning GG Plot? Because I think it has to do with the end of interrupting enclosure. And is that the idea? We want to perpetually interop with R? Or is it so we have an idea of GG Plot interworking and we will then build out some kind of library of our own that, you know, is a quasi GG Plot? Is that the idea? I don't know to what end this is, because I, you know, I know GG Plot's a little bit. I've used Vega with Hanami and they're, they're, they're all nice. Uh, they all have their pros and cons. So to what end is, are we looking at here?
So I think both Tomas and Kira may have an answer for why they're learning GG Plot.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, I assume everyone's here for a slightly different reason, but yeah, I'm like, I'm interested in actually implementing this enclosure. Um, I don't know how realistic that is. Like someday I'll have to get a real job, but for now I have some time to work on open source, um, things and like, um, yeah, I got a little bit of funding from closures together. And so I, like, this may be like the only time in my life when I actually have time to do a project like this. And so I kind of want to take advantage and, uh, yeah, and maybe, and you know, maybe we'll quickly realize that's just like a totally crazy idea and it's never going to work. But, um, yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what kicked this off. I just figured, you know, kind of learning the underlying philosophy is reasonable place to start before you start slinging code.
From my side, uh, I definitely interested to, to, to create the library. Cause I, in the past I did one, CLJ Plot and
I was gonna say.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah. I failed in the, in, in the API actually and I, at the, at the, can you hear me? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I don't, I wouldn't call it a failure. I think it was, I think that's too harsh. It was like, it's a great library. I was, I was even going to say like, I think CLJ Plot is a really good starting point. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you have there a lot of primitives and then drawing done.
That's the thing.
But the API is totally, yeah, the trash to, 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 to throw, to replace with anything useful. So I think we can join forces if you want, Kira. And let's, let's, let's see how the GG Plot two is, uh, created and how the API, how the data flow is
That's so exciting.
than the, yeah. So I'm really, I'm highly interested in it.
Yeah, well, I think, I think CLJ Plot's a really, really good place to start because like I, yeah, I've done a lot of front-end stuff and SVG stuff and I hate it. And so, but I think there's, I think there's two, there's like many different layers, you know, there's like the, the, the UI, like the actual API that users are going to be typing in. And then there's the kind of like conversion to the data structures. And then there's rendering those data structures as graphics on an HTML page. And that's the part that CLJ Plot already kind of does really well. And so I think it's, um, I think it's a really good, it's a good building block for sure. And, and yeah, I would love to, to, you know, work more together. And anyway, yeah, I know, I know, well, well, I'm sure we'll be seeing more of each other around, around the internet, but I don't know. This is, I feel like probably it's not going to work, but I'm trying to be, I'm, I'm feeling optimistic right now. So we'll see.
In theory, it's not going to work. Why? And Kira, you say it's not going to work. Why? It seems like Tomas has a very nice library. I've been using some as even Daniel just showed, you know, right off the back with the little pinky. He's able to pop up these plots that are beautiful, like what 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 are some stumbling blocks?
Just the time, just the time. I think it's, you know, I think I might, I might run out of money before I, before I finish the check and have to get a real job and then there's just no time. But but for now, it's, but for now it's fun. It's super fun getting a chance to work on all this stuff and and yeah, and I would love to see it, like Daniel was saying, like moving as much of the processing as we can to the the JVM side is really the goal because right now, like he was saying, a lot of the graphs do some non-trivial lifting on the JavaScript end, which is just like prohibitively slow and messy. And so that's what CLJ plot implements really nicely is like doing all of the crunching and all of the manipulation and everything enclosure like proper on the JVM and then just sending as little information as possible to the browser is kind of the dream. I'm sorry, I have like a little hand. I feel like I'm rambling. Sorry. Are you trying to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just adding to the, just adding to the ambition, right? Like, one of the nice things about like having like the 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 grammar separate from the specification, separate from the rendering, as you just described, right? Is the potential of rendering to multiple different targets, right? Primarily, all of our work targets the browser because that's the because that's the the environment where a lot of our computational notebooks are. I mean, I use Clerk basically every day. You know, and it's a, it's a great, it's a great library, but you know, like there are potential other rendering targets, right? Like, you know, Humble UI is mat- maturing more and more, right? It's a platform for desktop applications with closure on the JVM, you know, and if you, if you implement the specification as a data structure, you know, in a manner analogous to the internals of GG plot or Vega Lite, you could imagine rendering it using Humble UI, right? And then you, if you have GG plot written in an implementation independent way, you could, you know, use the same specification and render it as part of a desktop data visualization app written using Humble UI, which would be, I think that's like, to me, that's the ideal case, right? And that's, I think that that's part of the power of the specification of the grammar of graphics is that like it makes that kind of separation easy. And I think that we do have the the stuff in the closure world to do something like this. I think, Kira, you're right, though. It's just like the time and the and the work necessary to do it.
It's just hard to get people to pay money for this kind of stuff. It's like, you know, it's like the equivalent of basic research in science. It's like, just trust me, just give me all your money and then maybe in like three years I'll have something that's worth it. Maybe not, though. But, you know, it'll be, it'll be fun for me. So can I please have some money? I'm not very good at selling it and there's not really, there's some, there's some grants and stuff, but there's not, I don't know, maybe there are. I just don't know. I don't know how to make money doing this, but for now I just, I stopped caring about that and I'm doing it anyway. But I don't know how sustainable that is in the long run. Yeah. Gonna move to Mexico or something.
We have ten minutes to the official time and it is kind of tempting to ask, should we just continue this discussion of where we're going, of what we wish to do? Or should we actually study something about GG plot, like look into a few plots? Or dive into the data structure? Which one do we prefer? And should we have another session in a week or two? Yodo?
I mean, I I I'm excited about all of this, but if if I were to kind of suggest something, I would like to just jump into REPL and and try to implement some of this, just like start GG plot namespace and see if we can get some of the operations going.
Yeah. Would you like me to share the screen or maybe anybody else and and play with it? Or should, maybe because we have just a few minutes, then maybe this part belongs to after the official time, after maybe somebody may need to leave and then we can kind of open a REPL and just stay and 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 write some stuff if it makes sense, Yodo, right? And so, yeah, because, yeah, we just have seven minutes to the official time and I don't know if anybody needs to leave, but maybe
I will be leaving.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So so, yeah, so maybe it makes sense to kind of use this time to discuss first, yeah, I think we'll keep going with reading the book and and maybe because I'm reading, maybe I should try to summarize some parts, but we can also have sessions with just spending more time with actually with the book. And and should we set something next week or in two weeks? We can also chat about it offline. So if anybody wishes to join another session, please write to me and we'll organize something and and then, oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you for writing. Yeah. So yeah, I I think so personally, what I'm hoping to do is to, you know, for a while, just explore and document what I'm seeing and not try to build anything yet for a while. And so I'm happy that you are thinking about building something and maybe I'm more on the side of looking and documenting. And hopefully it will be helpful and yeah, so I'll try to keep sharing that namespace, that that namespace with a few exploration examples and and yeah, so does anybody have any thoughts about where we are, about where we should be going? Or any concluding thoughts before some people leave?
So I think, I think like for for me at least, the the goal would be to just read like, I don't know, a chapter or two till next week and then in some way, collect my thoughts about them, maybe write some notes or or a short video of what I thought and then and then based on that, like reflect, like have a look what what everybody's thoughts were on on those chapters. And I think that could be instructive for how a new library could look like because where are people dripping, what's hard for for people? And and also just learning how GG plot actually works.
Yeah, I think it just comes down to like, everybody works differently, right? Like some people, like I'm, I'm off, I'm sort of like you guys, you know, I'll read a book cover to cover before I do anything and like, just like stew on it and mull it over. But other people, you know, like I notate or love to just like jump in and learn by doing it. I think that's great, too. And I think, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, it's just, it's different ways of coming to the same understanding. And so however, however, that works for for everyone, like, yeah, basically, I think it's cool to just do it in public as much as anyone is interested in. But yeah, there's no, there's no like necessarily right or wrong way. So go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in like continuing to study and like, one of the things that I, that I, that I intend to do is like, you know, like write up my thoughts like on the actual grammar of graphics book because I think like it's particularly useful because it's not tied to any specific implementation, right? It's not tied to the internal details of Vega Lite. You know, it it's not tied into the internal details of GG plot two, you know, and like, you know, even though I think GG plot two is a more faithful representation of the core concepts in the grammar of graphics book, like, you know, if we're being ambitious, right? We could look at the book and be like, what could closure do better than R? Because I think, I think it can, I think it can. And and that's, that's, that's so for me, that's what I'm interested in focusing on is is looking at the ideas and seeing how, you know, a different distillation of the concepts would make sense for the for the closure, you know, data ecosystem.
Maybe it sounds like there's a lot of people, like, it might be really cool if you know, we had like a little collection of blog posts or or whatever, however, people are are thinking of sharing all these ideas like, because I think it's, it's always helpful to read how other people are understanding something because it kind of can like, for me anyway, it helps me like, like, are we thinking about this the same way? Like, am I getting it the way I think I'm getting it? So anyway, I think it'd be super cool to keep in touch, whether it's through like synchronous meetings like this or just on the Slack. Like, if you guys end up, if you like read a chapter and write a blog post about it or start up a little demo repo, just playing around like, it'd be cool to collect all of that kind of in like one place, I think, and share it and we can all kind of like, like, see how it's, how it's going. Because, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not like, it's nothing revolutionary. It's actually very elegant and and simple, I find, but it's like, it's just a lot to take in and it's a big project. And so I don't know, I feel like the more, the more ways of explaining and and understandings that are out there, the better.
Maybe two short comments. So one, I think it is very interesting to look into Hanami. Hanami, the general idea of expressing defaults and some logic around defaults as data. So i- it is something like the the lambda calculus enclosure maps. It is a way to specify how you you propagate your defaults through your data to generate your data visualization visualization specifications. And it is an alternative to GG plot that actually has a lot of logic in those in those many functions. So I think it it is insightful to just just see Hanami and read some of the discussions around it in Zulip. And the other comment is that many of the discussions around this are in Zulip. And at least three of the relevant people who are not here today are there over the 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 chat in Zulip chat, including John Anthony, the Hanami author. So maybe it would be great to keep chatting about it there, I believe. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe if if anyone here is not on the Zulip, it seems to be more active than the Slack for this kind of topic. Yeah, and yeah, I love, I like Hanami, like, anyway, I could talk about this stuff forever, but the problem I find with Hanami is like, because I think this isn't also in like the intro chapter of the book. Andrew, it's like, you know, they talk about getting away from like a collection of specifications for specific charts towards like a generic grammar as in like a language and it's, it's just a different way of thinking about graphing. But I think the thing that from Hanami that's really useful that we that we should hang on to is the defaults because it's like, yeah, you can set all of these very sensible defaults all the way down and then use Spectre or whatever library to like meta merge them all the way up so that you end up with these really like terse, like brief like graphic descriptions or whatever. But yeah, the pro, I find the the current, just the current implementation leads to this like proliferation of like chart templates, which is like kind of what we're trying to get away from. Because it's just, there's, there's an infinite number of possible distinct chart specifications. And so whilst it's cool and useful and I can totally see where John is coming from, like if you're in a, in a niche domain, like if you're like a biochemist or if you're a physicist, there might only be like four types of charts that you ever make. And so you have your library of charts and you just use those and it works great for that. But for kind of the more like generic, like data analysis, data exploration type user, which is, I think, more common in the the world of like data science. It can be like limiting because you end up with this very bespoke set of chart templates and then they can be like a little bit cumbersome to to change and edit. And if you want something that's not one of those, you really have to know the fundamentals and like the internals of Vega Lite anyway. And so it's like, what do I need this library for? But it is super cool. It's a, it's a really cool idea and I really like the idea of of, that's the thing. Yeah. So you, you, you have this higher level grammar instead of these like chart layouts, basically, is is the goal. Anyway, I'm rambling, sorry.
Yeah, thank you so much. We are now around the official time. Maybe somebody need to leave, needs to leave. Does anybody wish to say anything before we stop recording? Yodo?
I kind of just, in general, really fond of when you're kind of closing a meeting, what is the kind of next, next unknown? And for me, I'd, I'd love to kind of start thinking about operations and types because that's how I would approach trying to model this enclosure. But where I'm stuck is that I don't know GG plot two and and the grammar of graphics. So I'd either need to learn that myself or work with someone who who is familiar with that or more familiar with that than I am.
Great. Yeah. So we'll keep chatting offline, I think, and a few of us will now stay after the recording. So so nice to meet again, everybody and and really a pleasure. And we will now say goodbye to the recording, to our friends listening to the recording. We just say that the the interesting part begins now when we're not recording. That's the best part. And also that there is a new study group coming, the Closure Real World Data Study Group, where people will share their own data problems, data projects in a shared space, meet biweekly. And finally, it is happening after a long delay. So if anybody is interested, then please let us chat about it. So now we'll say goodbye to the recording and see you on the next time.